Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little call please.
Commissioner Layland.
Present.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Present.
Commissioner Lauch.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Barrera.
Present.
Commissioner Howie.
Present.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Here.
Very good, thank you. Alright, so now we're going to public comment. The floor is now open. Each speaker has a maximum of...
Quick note, the agenda from this point forward is using the new rules, so there are two public comment periods. The first one is limited to the agenda items, and then the second one is open to all. So that was what was decided, I think, in the rules, and I have done that now as well too.
Okay. So just as a reminder, each speaker has a maximum of three minutes to address the board. When you approach the podium, please state your name for the record. Please do not address individual commissioners directly, and note that there will not be any back-and-forth discussion between the board and the public. Once your time is up, kindly conclude your comments and take a seat. Do we have any public comments? Okay, hearing none, go ahead and close the public comments. Additions and deletions to the agenda, are there any? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Supports.
The agenda has been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda has been approved.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the March 21st, 2024 committee, the whole meeting minutes.
I'll support. Minutes have been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the minutes have been approved. Moving on, we have the finance report. As usual, the finance report is included in the packet. Does any member of the board have questions for the administrative staff?
I was just gonna let you know that the bottom in the green was updated with the fund balance that was stated from the audit that everyone got at the last meeting, so I just wanted to let you know those fund balance numbers are adjusted down below, and then right below it you'll see the amount that we have scheduled to go out this year, so far from the budget versus, you know, any adjustments we've made so far. So I just wanted to make that clarification on that fund balance. It's more up to date.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any questions on that? Moving right along, we don't have any unfinished business, so we'll jump into new business. Just as a reminder, we will discuss and vote on each agenda item individually. Each item will need a motion, a second, and a vote to move it along to the business meeting for an official vote. Does anyone have any questions on that? First item on our new business is materials management planning. We have Commissioner Marquetti, Administrator Newton. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Do you want to start?
Yeah, I can. So I know Commissioner Marquetti and I have been working in a work group with representatives from Marion County and Van Buren County for many months now on kind of a multi-county materials management plan. We talked about this actually back in October, I believe, and there was a resolution at that time to move forward with the multi-county plan. In the intervening time, Eagle actually announced the official 180-day period for us to be able to get an inter-local agreement done and all of that, and we found out there was a couple pieces that they wanted to have done before the resolution date. So one of those things was sending out letters to adjacent counties, kind of informing them what our plans were, and having receipt of those before we actually authored a resolution. So that's part of the reason for the resolution essentially is to clean that up and make sure everything's in compliance with what Eagle wanted. The other thing that I would note as well is that the inter-local agreement, so there's actually from, I believe it became effective March 29th of, or excuse me, January 8th of '24, is when the MMP planning process started. From that, we have 180-day window to complete the MME development and implementation process, and with a notice of intent to Eagle as to how we're going to proceed. So one of the big components is an inter-local agreement between the counties, as well as whoever you're picking for your designated planning agency. In our case, that would be Southwest Michigan Planning Commission. We did include the inter-local agreement draft, as it is right now, in the packet for everybody to be able to look at. Essentially, it establishes how the parties are going to work together, the governing board that will be established as part of this. It'll be representatives from all of the counties, as well as, much like with solid waste planning now, there's industry reps, so you have to have a rep that does this, a rep that does that. That was part of the idea behind the inter-local agreement also, was that in some counties, it's been a real challenge to find a representative that met that criteria, as anybody who was on the solid waste planning committee knows. There's provisions in here in terms of how those appointments will be handled, and there's a couple things we haven't actually completed yet in terms of a few different attachments and schedules that need to be done, but you know, those things are still a work in progress. But we wanted everybody to at least get an idea of what the draft is right now, be able to kind of parse through it as you get a chance, and if you come up with questions later, certainly do that. I know that actually Becca with the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission sent us a copy today, in fact. They had a few different tweaks and updates, so it's still very much a work in progress, but it's coming together nicely, and you know, I think ultimately what we should have should give us, you know, a real great opportunity to be able to address materials management in a great way. And we will have a grant that will actually provide funding for a lot of the planning processes and things like that. That hasn't come down just yet, but one note, one item to note is that the grant and Eagle did not actually really approach it in the best way. So designated planning agencies like the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission are incurring costs in terms of planning out how we're doing these agreements, things like that, but there isn't a mechanism for them to be reimbursed right now. So that's one thing that you'll likely see coming up in the near future, is some sort of an agreement between the counties and Southwest Michigan Planning Commission to cover those costs while that grant is being finalized. Obviously, that'll be reimbursed by the grant as well. So there won't be any net cost to the county, but you'll see that coming soon as well. If there's anything else you want to add?
No, I have nothing to add. Well, thank you.
Thank you for that report. Does anyone have any questions?
Move that we move it forward.
Support.
If there are no further questions, then the motion has been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Next, we have the Silver Creek Township Police Services Contract. Sheriff Banky?
This is the second year of the Silver Creek, I think it's the second year, second year of the Silver Creek Township Police Contract. We don't have a full-time position in Silver Creek at this time, but we have an agreement to provide overtime services or patrol services and overtime rate for the township, and this is just an update and renewal of that contract, and they've approved it at their meeting, and I'm asking for your approval as well.
Does anyone have any questions for the sheriff?
I move we put this forward to the regular meeting. Thank you.
There are no further questions, and the motion has been moved and supported, right? Did we have a second on that?
Yes, we did.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Next, we have the drug enforcement millage renewal. Sheriff Banky or Administrator Newton, does anyone need to add anything to this?
I'll talk a little bit. So one of the things, I know this came up, I think, at the last meeting about wanting to make sure we got this passed in time, so that's the purpose of it being here. And I think it's actually a good thing that we came to the committee at the whole with it too, because we checked with the attorney, and there's actually three different routes you can take with a millage renewal like this. So the first one would be a straight renewal of your existing millage as reduced by Headley. So that would actually be .4751 mils. That's what the most recent one was as of '23. The second option would be you could renew the millage up to, you know, the original amount of half a mil, but you have to state it a little differently. So you'd have to say, of which .4751 mils is a renewal, and then an additional amount of this amount. So you have to, you can phrase it in the same question, but you have to delineate those two things if you wanted to put it back up to the original, you know, millage rate. Or the other option, if you wanted to approach it differently, would be to just approach it as a new additional millage and say, you know, will, shall there be an approved millage of, you know, .5 mils for this purpose essentially, and you don't count it as a renewal. So when you would look at it at the ballot, it'd look like it's a brand-new proposal. So those are the three different paths we can take. So we would have to do a little bit of revision to the existing resolution. We didn't get that from Carl until today, so now we know what we need to do. But Monica actually let me know, we need to put a title on. We had kind of copied a little bit of what we had from previous resolutions. That didn't have a title, so we want to add that into the resolution. And then the biggest thing is just determining how do we want to go about the proposal. So is it a straight renewal of what ended in 2023, or do we want to look at that, renewing that amount and then up to an additional amount to bring us back to that original .5 or not?
I like the second option. And do we vote on that to move all three options, or we pick options now?
I would say pick one, and then that's the, we'll update the resolution to fit those parameters.
The second one makes the most sense.
Can you tell us what the difference was, and like, so if we want the .475, what that total number would be versus the .5 that's listed here? What that .475 would bring?
I don't know exactly off the top of my head. That's a really good question.
Yeah, I mean, it can't be much of a difference, but I mean, just out of curiosity, it's like...
It's like 1.1.
Yeah.
What was our tax collection this year?
Eight hundred.
That was a little different, because the actual...
What was the percentage?
Assessed amount was less than the total, because it was like .1171, I think, is what it was.
Yeah, it's because we reduced, so yeah, it should be a little north of a million.
Yeah, I think it'd be right about a 1.1.
I like the second option.
I'm good with the second option.
Can I ask a question, Matt? If you go with the second option, is the title renewal or not?
I believe it would be a renewal. You just have to designate the portions...
Right, in the body.
In the body of the proposal, yeah, from what Carl had said. I mean, I'll obviously work with him to make sure that whatever the final language is, they're totally fine with it. They have a specialist in their office that does millages. That's one of her main things, but that was the biggest thing, was how we wanted to go about it before we proceeded.
It does, it does make a big difference, having a renewal in that title.
Absolutely.
Sheriff, do you have something you want to add to this?
I just think I really couldn't hear exactly what Matt says, but I think we need to be kind of consistent. I understand there's some inconsistencies, but, and just going with the Headley override amount. From word in some of the meetings I've been to, there's already people saying that we're going to raise the millage, and that's not the message we want to see, even I don't think we need to, but that came out of a meeting that the undersheriff was at, Marcellus Township. And so traditionally, we've gone, kind of gone, went the Headley override, and I think that's probably the best way to go.
I would agree, especially since it's a renewal, and is this financial climate due, I think?
Well, I could see, you know, potentially from the public's perspective, you know, if you see the renewal amount and then an additional levy, that's obviously the question that comes to mind, is oh, we're going to see more than that. So I mean, maybe, you know, a straight renewal is an easier option.
So that's the first option?
Yeah.
Yeah, the first option.
Which would be about 1.1 million?
Yeah, and we have people that, I mean, I have people that ask, where's this money going? We don't have a drug team.
So it's going to be, it's going to be a little lower.
So this would be .5 if we go with the .475?
Well, after the sheriff's explanation, I like that too. After you said that, I would tend to change my mind and go with what you said.
Yeah, and then, and then the advantage there too, is that in the, in the actual proposal, the language stays in that, shall there be a renewal for the, you know, a renewal approved at this amount? So the title can be drug, you know, drug enforcement millage renewal, you know, so it doesn't appear to be something new.
That makes sense.
I'll make the motion for the first option.
I'll second that.
Just to be clear, the first option being the renewal, right?
Yeah, this is straight renewal.
At .475.
At the rate we're allowed to renew it.
Yeah, makes sense.
All right. I believe on the first two agenda items, I didn't ask for any discussion, so I want to make sure I do this correct. So we've got a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
We forgive you, man.
Thank you.
All right. So if there are no further questions, the motion has been moved and
supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion has been approved. Okay, next up, we have the COA millage renewal.
So this is a similar scenario. So in the packet, I had talked with Marty, and there was some discussion amongst the COA board as to whether they wanted, how they wanted to approach it as well. So they hadn't decided at the time we were doing the packet. The COA board has actually decided they would like to stick with just the same straight renewal. So that first option where it was .9858 and allow an increase of this would be, that one would be nixed. It'd be just the second version in the packet that says .9858 mils.
And Marty's here?
And he's here if anybody has any questions.
I'll give him an opportunity to speak if he has anything he wants to add to it.
No, we had a board meeting on Tuesday this week, and it was kind of the same idea that we had here. The amount of money was negligible between the renewing and going for the full mil, and didn't want to put a bad taste in anybody's mouth of doing that. But we appreciate your nice support over the last years, and hope to continue.
Great, thank you.
It seems pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any questions?
If there are no further questions, I entertain a motion to move this item to the BLC meeting.
We have to decide whether...
Oh, no, no, it's only going to be the...
Yeah, they're recommending only the .9858.
Yep, not the additional.
And I'll make that motion.
No, no, not so far.
All right. Motion has been made and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Number five, we have policy updates, tax sharing policy and conflict of interest policy. Someone from the policy committee wish to speak to this, or the administrator, either one?
I'm happy to, but if anybody else wants to first, that's fine.
The tax sharing policy, if I may, we had this, this was brought to us twice in the policy committee, and I think we have a good idea of now what it, what it's referring to, and did a good job.
Thank you.
So I, I'm in favor of it.
Both of them are one and the same. Are they correlate together, don't they? Are they two separate ones?
Two separate ones.
They're just two separate ones, yeah.
So, and I can give a quick overview, the tax sharing policy, the biggest difference is, is that the existing policy was approved more as a resolution. So there's a lot of whereas this, whereas that, and, you know, it's not always the most easy to read. So we wanted to try to do more of a plain language version that has purpose, authority, responsibility. It's easier to understand the terms and things that are in there. So most of that actually is very similar to what's in the existing policy, almost verbatim. The difference is just the formatting changes. The one change that we do have in there, and that was, this was discussed with the county treasurer as well as the equalization director, is in the policy itself, item in section six, number five, is that any approved tax capture or abatement agreement shall be provided to the county equalization director and the county treasurer for review. So there are some instances where the board of commissioners, depending on what it is, IFTs are an example, like so, or excuse me, downtown development authorities, local development financing acts, where the county could choose to opt out of that tax capture from the county's perspective. Some of them, like Brownfields, we can't. And I think what's happened in the past is some local units, knowing that the county doesn't really have a decision to opt out, forget that, hey, by the way, we need a copy of that approved agreement, so that, you know, equalization and the treasurer's office can update things and approach those in the right way and know what's going on and be aware. And then actually, the other component that's really been missed a number of times is that the board of commissioners, whether there's an approved policy or not, whether the board has a decision to opt out or not, the board is still supposed to see those and be made aware and have them at a meeting. So we actually, last night at the leaders' meeting for all those township supervisors that were here, talked about this, gave everybody a copy, and then explained that we were looking at a policy tonight, and that once, you know, if there was an adoption of the new one, that will go out to all the local units, so they're aware of it as well. So it's part of it's raising awareness to, to our local units.
Yes.
And last night, we had, we had actually nine supervisors at the county leaders' meeting last night, and when it was presented to them, it was very, very well received. And that was one of the points that was made in the policy committee, that it has to go out to the townships and the city and the four villages, so that they know what our policy is. It was very well received last night.
Yeah, I can see that. Excuse me. So are there any further questions on this motion? If there are no further questions, I entertain a motion to move this item to the BLC meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion has been approved. Number six, we have the public defender office renovation.
We have a conflict.
This is the next one, number five.
Oh, I apologize.
Right.
Conflict of interest policy.
Yep. So there's, there's been several discussions, I know, on conflict of interest and ethical standards, and we had, as part of our annual audit, there's a part of that process in terms of, you know, getting information from elected officials and appointed officials that, hey, are you aware of any conflicts, things like that. A lot of it, of course, is based around the financials of the county, but there really hasn't been much in the way of a formal policy in terms of governing how these things are managed, how you deal with questions that come up. So we started to look around at some other examples. That's where this actually comes from, is looking at a couple other examples from other counties and kind of repurposing those to fit our needs. A couple things, I guess, for highlights that I'll touch on, is it goes into what requires disclosure of interest, whether they're actual or potential, prohibited conduct as it pertains to conflict of interest as well, what disclosures are required. And then the thing that I really like about this version is that it actually brings the county attorney into it. So annually, once the policy goes into effect, elected officials and appointed officials will complete the attached form. It's under attachment A for the policy, and then the county attorney will review it. And the idea is that he's looking at all of those to determine for anything that is either, you know, stated as a conflict or a potential conflict, you know, has he evaluated those and given any guidance as to, yep, this is a conflict, here's what you need to be aware of, or B, nope, that's not a conflict at all, you're totally fine. And then it also provides for an opinion from the county attorney. So if there's ever a question that arises, whether it's amongst the board or other elected officials, whomever it is, to say, hey, I think that could be a conflict, the way that actually would be approached is that the county attorney would actually provide a privileged legal opinion to the board of commissioners, interpreting the effect of this policy and whether there actually is a conflict. So you get less of the chance of this kind of, is it or isn't it, and, you know, no real mechanism to figure out what the actual...
That should squash our argument.
That should help, you know, exactly. So we'll get an opinion from Carl. It can be shared as a... That should help, you know, exactly. So we'll get an opinion from Carl, it can be shared as a privileged opinion with everyone, and hey, here's the result, here's what it is.
A lot of our high profile committees like Woodlands and, uh, the one that you're on and Berrien that I used to be on, I can't think of the name of it. We have to do it anyway.
It's pretty common for a lot of those, yeah. Um, and then the final section is in terms of enforcement. Um, if there is an instance where a conflict wasn't properly disclosed or, um, something arises and somebody kind of flouts that, um, the actual enforcement of the policy falls to the board of commissioners. Board of commissioners will have the authority to render a final decision on something. Um, that could include, um, but it isn't necessarily limited to, say, censure of the official that was found in violation. So kind of a formal public, hey, you didn't do this right, if it comes to that.
So that's, that's what's gonna happen anyway.
There is some sort of teeth, well, yeah, but I mean, uh, it's different to have, I think, a, a formal public censure of an official. It's a little different than, than, than just handling it through the institution.
Says, I think you got a conflict of interest, they're, they're gonna look at the form, we're gonna pay the attorney to do it. Then that person that's making the complaint is gonna say, well, I don't believe he disclosed everything, so now we gotta pay the attorney again to, to look into that person's background and history and all this stuff. And then, then it's finally gonna be final.
Yeah, well, and part of the idea with the form, and I know that there's been some discussion on this even amongst the policy committee itself, but, um, it does actually ask for quite a few different things in terms of names of current employers, any business interests, any boards and commissions you're on now. It's probably a little more than maybe what may absolute, may absolutely be required. But the idea is that all those potential things are there and that Carl has everything to be able to say, yep, nope, and, you know, hopefully eliminate all of the, the question that could be out there as to whether something is or not.
Yeah, and we came to the understanding that, yep, it's pretty thorough, but you only have to fill it out once, right? Yeah, and I mean, as long as for your sitting time there, you fill it out, and then when you get reelected, of course, you fill it out again. But, you know, if that's every four years for us, filling that out.
That's a lot better.
One time, is it when you get elected or is it annual? Oh, this is an annual, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's annually, I'm sorry. You fill it out once a year, it's still not.
Or if you have a change in status or job or something like that.
So it's, uh, upon assuming office, so, you know, for obviously like for next year after the elections, it'd be probably in January when everybody's assuming office. We'll get these out and people would fill them out and then annually thereafter too. Probably that January timing makes sense, I would think.
Just like broad every January we're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, probably around the time of the organizational meeting would probably be the, would make the most sense.
I, I mean, I still think it's nice, 'cause again, you're gonna incur some costs from having the attorney involved. But it shows that we're trying to be as open as possible with the public. And also it presents us with the opportunity to have that discussion with the attorney. In case we do have to head, you say, hey, look, these are potential things that might be a risk on this part, I know now how to avoid that sitting in this.
I move, we move the conflict of interest policy forward.
Second.
Uh, so we have a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? Motion has been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say no.
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 Do we get a roll call on that then? Just to be sure.
That is fine.
It's up to you.
Yeah, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Marquette?
No.
Commissioner Layland?
No.
Vice Chair Herrera?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Nope.
Commissioner Howie?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
I have five yes and three no.
All right, motion passes. Okay, now we can go on to number six, which is the public defender office renovation.
I was the chair of that board for that meeting, um, and we, we met and we, we sent the RFIs or RFPs or whatever the RF is for the renovation. And it's such a small project that all the people that we sent it to and everybody that would bid on it said, this is not big enough for us to waste our time. Elite are already here, working on our courthouse, they said they would do it. And that's what we move, we recommend to move forward, to let Elite do it. Since they're already here working on the courthouse, they might as well hop down the road and take care of that. That way, we already know what they can do and what they're doing, and they do a good job, so we're gonna go with that. But it's up to everybody here.
And the cost is, the cost of forty-four thousand is within the budget that was planned. Um, and it's all paid for out of the, the MIDC grant from the state, so there's no actual cost to the county, um, for the work that will be done either.
I'll make the motion to move it forward.
I'll second that, so are we done with the discussion?
Uh, so we have a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion on this?
Uh, yes, um, and you and I had talked about contractors and you did contact all of them and they just didn't respond back.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we looked at a number of different options in terms of the bids and, because it's, it's really mostly just moving a wall. And, I mean, there's, there's obviously some work involved in it too, but, um, a lot of the firms that were out there were saying, hey, you know, we're looking at projects that are, you know.
In the millions.
Millions of dollars of projects.
They don't wanna come for forty thousand dollars.
Scheduling ti- you know, timing that, hey, we don't have time to fit in a project like this, or, hey, we're looking at other options and, you know, we're gonna take project A, that's gonna be a, you know, two million dollar project instead of a forty thousand dollar project. So, uh, you know, we did try to get more bids, um, than the one that we got. The other part of it, I think, is that with the lead is, there's a mobilization component to a lot of this. So, um, you know, in terms of getting trades out there and getting everything situated, um, the advantage with Elite was they're already here and they're already doing that for the courthouse, so there was gonna be less of a cost, uh, for them in terms of being able to complete the work, um, as well anyway, so.
Going forward, uh, when bids are sent out, is there any way we would have access to those numbers?
Uh, I mean, we would, I mean, if, uh, in any case where we would have, uh, you know, an RFP that goes out, um, the idea would be that we would bring all of those, whatever the numbers are, say, we got five bids back, you know, be able to bring those back. There may be a recommendation to say, we choose, we would recommend, you know, this option, but, uh, we would present that in full. So that actually the letter from Intersect, um, does say, um, you know, it lists the six that we appro- that we, that had, actually did respond back. Um, and then the, the fact that they had declined. Um, so we did present that in, in a way, but yeah, absolutely. With RFPs, we wanna make sure that the board is able to see what those numbers were and, um, you know, and there may be times, right, where, um, you know, it might be the low bid. There could be times where maybe the recommendation is to go with something that isn't necessarily the low bid, but there's a reason why. So we would wanna make sure that commissioners have all of that information in front of them.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I'd rather have Elite do it, because if we do go with, uh, somebody bids it really, really low, we're gonna get what we paid for and it's gonna be garbage. You know, Elite, they do, they do good work. I don't wanna pay it lowest bidder, same.
Sure, oh, please.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
When is Elite gonna do this work?
Yeah, we, we, the idea is to get, uh, was to get this approved, um, through the board of commissioners. We haven't scheduled the timeline yet, that was the biggest thing, was working through the, the timeline. Um, we've got some flexibility with that. I know, obviously, Casa is a part of that.
That's why I'm asking.
Um, I talked with Judge Beeler about that, uh, last week actually, and so of course, the plan is gonna be whatever this works out to, to make sure that we've coordinated with Erica from Casa to make sure that we've, uh, facilitated, and we will have space here. Yes. Yep, so we are, we are gonna have her move over and back over here. I know she was here for a while and then moved out there and now we're looking at back, so. Uh, but we will do everything we can to make sure that she has enough time to, to be able to move things, it's not gonna be a rush. You know, we wanna, we wanna make it as smooth and as painless as, as possible.
I just wanna circle back to a comment, um, that Commissioner Howie made. When these RFPs get sent out, do they get, return them back to the, um, capital projects committee?
Uh, I mean, generally, it, it might depend on what the, the RFP is, right? Um, you know, but if it's a capital project, then yes, we normally will bring those back. I mean, they usually will get returned to the administrator's office or something. We may do a bid opening, if, you know, that's a lot of times what we'll do, um, is have a bid opening, we'll set a date for that. Um, you know, you'll see that come up as we start talking more in the future about, say, our wage and salary, sort of, you know, uh, class comp work that we're gonna be doing. We'll do a bid opening, in this case, it would then go to the capital projects committee for their review, and then to the board of commissioners from there.
Okay. Cause I was just thinking, I know we're trying to work towards getting like, uh, meeting, draft meeting minutes out or when they're approved and just trying to put that on the website, so.
Yep.
I thought in my mind, if it went back to that committee, then at least it would somewhat, I don't know if it would be, you know, beneficial to have that information documented, but. Just thinking out loud.
Not if we want, if, if we didn't get the bid, we can't put them numbers out publicly like that, cause then people would know what the, you know, that's why that numbers are kinda secret.
Although actually, in most cases, we would, um, you know, if there's an RFP that comes back, um, and it goes to a committee, whatever, you know, and it's, whether it's capital projects or, you know, a different committee, whatever that is, depending on what we, work we were doing. Um, and we would present, whatever we would present to the board of commissioners. So if there's five bids we got back and here's the various costs, here's our proposals, we would bring that to that committee. Uh, and then what would come here essentially is those same materials, but the recommendation from the committee saying, hey, we looked at it, here's what we'd recommend the county go forward with, but we would still present the other stuff also.
All right.
So, uh, the motion has been made and supported. All those in, I'm sorry, is there any further discussion on this? Okay, the motion has been made and supported. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, the ayes have it, the motion has been approved. Okay, number seven, the LCC building HVAC slash mechanical system improvements.
All right, I will, I will tee it up, I guess, with the best I can.
I'll let you have that.
Dave is back there, so, uh, if I, if I don't get it quite right, do you wanna take it then?
If I, if I may, like to, personal note, this, this is the first time I've been in front of y'all bef- since my son passed. And I just wanted to tell y'all, thank you for what you did. Black and the tree was just amazing, it meant a lot to my wife and I. And, uh, I mean, I'll talk about it till now, but thank you, it, it touched us, thank you very much. So, the two proposals, first is the chiller upgrade at the Long Courts. That's a hundred and twenty-five ton chiller, that handles the AC for the entire building. Uh, you're over twenty years on it, which is past life expectancy for the compressors that are in it. I think we'll get another ten years out of the chiller itself, which mainly consists of the chiller barrel and the condenser coils. But due to vibration and age, uh, it's all copper tubing, starts to wear, leaks develop. We lose all our refrigerant, that gets really expensive, uh, to replace. But more so than that, uh, if these, any of these two, either, either of these two compressors were to launch, as we say, uh, you're gonna send shrapnel and contaminants throughout the system. And then it's an emergency change out for a, a three hundred thousand dollar plus chiller. So, we've gotten a lot of good life out of it, I've kept that thing going for a lot of years, uh, but it's time. So, that quote is from Train, that includes everything, to replace the two compressors. Uh, also replace the electronic expansion valves, which meter the flow of refrigerant, it's Greek to you, I understand. Changing all the oil, oil filter, which is very important, um, testing the motor starters and, uh, obviously getting it back up to full operation. So I'm just, it's, it's frustrating, uh, cause it's my first time in government. But I'm trying to, hopefully, Matt and I've had some good discussions lately, I'd really like to change from being reactive to proactive when it comes to these facilities. We've got a lot, we've got north of four hundred pieces of mechanical equipment in our buildings. And I've never, I've, all my customers, commercial industrial that I've worked for, uh, they all had an annual upgrade replacement budget, and we don't. And we have a lot of equipment, we have a lot of old equipment. So, we're gonna, we're gonna hopefully change.
You're working on a list, aren't you? Like, this, these are your two top priorities and you're working on other things to do preventive maintenance for everything, right?
Well, that, that list was complete two months after I started here. That was a big thing to get it, that whole list put together, but, you know, this is a perfect example. These two quotes that we're presenting to you, uh, last year, together, were almost nine thousand dollars cheaper than they are now. It was just as serious then, you know, so it's just gonna continue.
Do it now before it gets to eighteen thousand.
Yeah. Uh, the building management system, that's the second quote, uh, that controls all of our HVAC and electrical for lighting, lighting controls. So all of your heating, cooling, and lighting controls, domestic hot water for the entire building. So, it's a, um, antiquated system, it was great while it lasted, it's gone past its life expectancy. Uh, it's a software-based system, uh, this will be, the new system will be web-based. Uh, the biggest issue, the, the thing that keeps me up at night about that system is the last time we changed an interface board in the main building control unit module, which is the brain of it all. Uh, that was the last board available. Should it go down, we're down. So, that's a big deal.
Dave, do you have the same piece of paper that we have in front of us?
What's, what is it, sorry?
Based off our agenda. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So, it says approve the quotes from Train the amount of sixty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for the repairs to the chiller at Long Courts building and the building control system. So, is one number for the chillers and one number for the building maintenance control?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. So anyway, like I say, that's, that's the whole brains of it, it goes down, loses our lighting, loses our heating, loses our cooling. And obviously, it can be repaired, but now you're going from, what, thirty-five thousand to seventy thousand. I mean, to have that changed in an emergency situ- situation from Train, the numbers would be astronomical. So, there again, proactive, I, I think this is a.
It's an easy decision.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a wish list.
It's a must do. Point, and this is for the future, is, um, to take, you know, we all know that there was, uh, it gets referenced a number of times, but for example, the Tower Pinkster report that did an assessment, Dave's done his own work on those things. Um, but the real key, and even what the Tower Pinkster report tells us, is that from that point forward, you know, the big thing is coming up with the capital improvement plan and looking at the next ten, fifteen years and saying, here's where the major pieces are that could fail, here's what we need to be able to, to do to maintain the buildings. I know we talked about this at the capital projects committee, but I do think that it, it is setting up a group to really work through what this capital improvement plan looks like. Finding, you know, what that, that dollar amount's gonna be on an annualized basis and, and really working to make sure that the, the maintenance to our buildings is taking place.
Yeah, that, you know, roofing, carpeting, as you've mentioned, Jim, I mean, we've got a lot of big issues, carpeting's a safety issue, so.
And that's a proprietary system to where we have to hire and pay Train to work on it, correct?
Yes, can you convert it? Yes, that's a lot of money, but the whole front end could be converted. But, you know, Train came in here, they actually came in when I was a contractor working down here and, and took that away because they have special government pricing, happens across the country.
I only bring that up just so if there's questions that arise in the future as to why you're not doing the work.
Exactly.
Everybody knows and it's out in the open.
Yeah, so the san- the systems you have at the jail, Long Courts are proprietary. You're not gonna get anybody else to work on them or change them. But you can get them to change them, but you're talking a lot of money, you know? And Train's been, you know, all fairness to Train, they've been great to work with. Uh, Ross Porter, he's my main contact, worked with him for years, he's a great guy, they respond quickly when we need him. But this, we're looking at a catastrophic failure soon, you know, with that chiller, so.
What's our turnaround plan?
Well, because we've pushed it off, that chiller will have to go through the summer as is, uh, yeah, those parts.
Slow season repair?
Well, those parts, uh, not only are they longer to get because that's a twenty-plus year old chiller, but there's a time, you know, that thing will be down for a week and we're coming into summer, it's just not possible, so. We'll limp it along, I made a repair on it two weeks ago, the whole thing went down, I was able to find a rubbed out wire in the middle of it. Um, like I say, best thing, obviously, we change the chiller, but I think we can get another ten years out of it, I really do. But these compressors. That's right.
Worked their repentance.
Back to Mr. Chair, back to Ryan's question, so what, what are we, what are we looking at, the repairs being made?
Uh, regarding the chiller?
Yes.
Yes, so you're getting two new remanufactured compressors. They're big screw compressors, physically they're, they're this big. There are, uh, there are a hundred, the whole chiller's a hundred and twenty tons, so each compressor's worth sixty tons of cooling. They're large, uh, it'll take a fair amount of rigging to get them in and out. Um, they change the oil in both systems, they got two circuits, obviously, all the oil's removed, replaced, tested for acidity. Um, the expansion valves, which are very expensive, uh, the old ones are antiquated and the new ones, the old ones are electronic, but they're no longer available. So part of a compressor change is you change all your dryers, you change your expansion valve, and that's what they're doing. It's, it's, it's a big project.
Be looking at sometime like fall, probably.
Yes, yeah, I talked to Ross about it and he said they can get us on the books in the fall when we're done with it.
Now, you do the, you do the, the building control system, is that separate timing then, or?
I'll have to, I'll get back with you on timeframe and how fast they can complete that, cause obviously we're down. But I think a lot of that stuff can be standalone operated while they're changing the mainframe on it. We can continue our temperature. We can continue our temperature control while they're changing it out. Yeah, sure, no, that's a good question.
Do these have any warranties or guarantees?
Yes, so, one year, obviously, for the compressors, that's the next issue, and I discussed it at length with Ross today. If you read the quote, there is an optional seven-year warranty on it. But that's for four thousand, uh, annually for both chillers, so when I say that, we have the chiller at the jail too. So they'll, they'll offer that same warranty for both of our chillers. That's a lot of money, that's a lot of money annually, um, you know, uh, not that Train's trying to pull an over on us, but we've, we're maintaining all of the maintenance on it in-house now, you know, typically, they had to call in Train, Train was, so we're doing that in-house now. My call is that we, we save that money and utilize it for other equipment that we could change. Uh, we still have the one-year warranty on the new compressors, but these new compress, the old compressors have made it this long. So I'm confident that they'll, these new ones will make it until the, the chiller itself needs to be replaced.
Okay.
But you start, you start adding that up, eight thousand a month for the next, you know, that's a lot of money. So my recommendation is, we take care of it, if, if, we can always change our minds at some point if, if we want to, but I don't think it's necessary.
Fingers crossed that we'll just get through the summer, ain't it?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Are there any further questions? Dave, I wanna thank you for coming here tonight, you really are the right person to speak to this, just thank you for breaking it down for us.
Okay, thank you guys, appreciate it.
So if there are no further questions, I entertain a motion to move this item to the BLC meeting.
Support.
Alright, motion has been moved and supported, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have and the motion has been approved. I think that puts us on number eight, animal control improvements discussion.
The brains of the outfit is passing out the ideas that we're, uh, proposing, so. Uh, we've been proposing a building, uh, and fenced, a project for animal control for some time. Uh, we have two storage buildings, or I should say sheds, that are currently used to store items at animal control, and they're both, I don't wanna call it end of life, but they're not in good shape. So we're looking at a, to update that with, uh, um, a barn, a pole barn, that would be used for that, uh, purpose for the storage. Also be able to possibly store animals, uh, others, other than dogs, or maybe even dogs, uh, at their. Also, the other page is, uh, is a green, the two green squares is a fenced-in, uh, area in which we can take dogs out to, uh, exercise them, one, one area would be for small dogs, one would be for large dogs, and the, the gray area you see around it is the fencing that goes around for more security, and the, or I used to say the gray area between is the, is between the two fences. And, uh, to make it more secure, uh, we have yet to approach the village of Cass on this, uh, we wanted to get this idea out and running before talking to the village of Cass about, uh, any possible variances that might be needed. I'm gonna let Ron talk about this a little bit more, but we have been in communication with Dave Ree from Facilities, and he's on board for what we're looking at. And, uh, so I, this was just kind of a discussion to get it on the table to you, uh, and to see how, how we all feel about it. Animal Control Director, Buss.
Thank you, Sheriff. So with the, uh, the first sheet you have there, Sheriff said that's, uh, the fencing, fencing area. Little past history, uh, as to how the shelter came about, where it is here in the village. Um, the shelter currently has no outside runs, uh, for the dogs to go. Um, back in nineteen ninety-six, when the shelter was, uh, built, uh, the village at the time did not allow us to have outside runs because of concern of barking, as well as, uh, a dog potentially escaping and going down to Donhorn Park. Um, times have changed, um, as most of you know, Donhorn Park now has several dog, uh, fenced-in areas for, as a dog park down there. Um, so I feel that this is a, a good time, you know, to, you know, that we can work with the village. As some of our long-term dogs, you know, that we have in the shelter, um, would greatly benefit from this. Uh, even though we are a municipal shelter, you know, we are still required to provide adequate care, um, in a safe and free and, and, uh, and, and type of environment. Um, with these dogs being inside all the time, we rely on volunteers, uh, to come in and walk the dogs. Um, volunteers are welcome anytime during the shelter hours that are open. Um, the dogs, uh, that we do have with the volunteers have, have shown great improvements, you know, as far as their behavior in the kennels. Uh, as we had one dog, it was in the shelter that had, had been in the building for five hundred and forty-nine days. Uh, one of our local, uh, uh, grooming shops sponsored his adoption fee, and he was adopted shortly thereafter. Um, so he was one, you know, that would benefit greatly, he was a grumpy old dog, and he wasn't the prettiest of dogs to look at, but he was, he's, he is definitely one, you know, that, uh, that we would keep in mind, you know, that we need to try to keep these guys um, into a healthy and cheerful environment, um, as, you know, they, they have feelings too, and, you know, sometimes you see that the dogs are down and it's just like they're, you know, they're having bad days just like we do, so. Give them, give them the opportunity for them to get out and stretch their legs, you know, play a little fetch, get some zoomies. Um, this is just, uh, helping us provide, you know, that adequate care, you know, for these dogs that we have in our custody. As Sheriff said, I've been working with, uh, Dave, um, on location, um, for these fenced areas. Um, there'd be a little site, a site grading that may need to be done, um, to not only maintain our water runoffs around the building, but as well as runoff area and a little bit, uh, flatter, uh, area, you know, so we're not having dogs run around getting all muddy and tearing up the grass. Um, as, as Sheriff said, uh, there is a security fence around that. As we are in the shelter, we have to provide, uh, what is called double fencing. Um, this allows, and the secondary perimeter fencing allows, um, safe access for the dogs so that no wild animals can make contact with them, um, through the fence, or people for that matter can make contact with the animals. Um, and we've chosen to have about a four-foot distance between that because the average person's not gonna be able to reach over a five-foot tall, tall fence, uh, to be able to make contact with the dogs. Um, and with that in mind, you know, the area in between, Dave and I have both come into agreement that having a weed barrier down and, and like some p-stone in between that to reduce maintenance costs and, and time would be beneficial for that as well. Uh, moving on to the pole barn, um, here again in years past, we've had to rely on citizens um, in the community, as well as neighboring animal control agencies to house our livestock when we seize animals, you know, from a cruelty situation. It seems like our average for these types of poles has been eighty to a hundred plus, almost up to two hundred animals at times. The leeway that we have for these cases is usually twenty-four hours or less. Um, years back, when the economy was good and a bale of hay, you could find a, a good quality hay for two dollars a bale, and now it's turned to eight to ten dollars. Um, a lot of our individuals in the community have, have opted out of helping us just because of the sheer cost, I don't blame them. Um, livestock is expensive to maintain, uh, we do have our donation fund that provides funds for those that can house animals for us. Um, but beings that we have short notice, uh, to get some of these animals, um, having the pole barn in place allows us to, uh, slow that, or give us a little bit of a comfort buffer in, uh, getting these animals, you know, located out in the community or adopted out. Uh, some of the animals, you know, will have to be under medical care, uh, to where having them there at the shelter, um, or, you know, in this facility, uh, will allow, you know, easier time, and less time spent for, uh, veterinarians, you know, that are examining them instead of having to travel long distances, either within the county or outside of the county, to examine these animals. Um, we've also relied on the, uh, county, uh, fairgrounds, uh, in years past, um, in the last seven years. We've had to utilize the fairgrounds three times. Um, since then, I've got a very good working relationship with, uh, the, uh, facilities manager and the board president. Unfortunately, with the fairgrounds, you know, there are times, you know, that we're unable to use the, you know, those grounds. Winter is the biggest no-brainer, um, the barns are shut down and used for storage. Um, and then during Fair Week, uh, as well as thirty days before the fair, um, as the fairgrounds are basically locked down for quarantine, so that it's safe for all of the, uh, show animals that are coming in, so there's no worry of, uh, disease, disease risk with that. Uh, with that relationship, that's been good, um, but at the change of a board, you know, I could lose that contact, I could lose that access. And if we get into a situation where we have a large number of animals and I don't have a place to put them, we're struggling with capacity levels at our shelters, as well as other, other shelters as well. That opportunity to, uh, use, utilize one of our neighbor, neighboring counties' facilities, you know, may not be there. So, and then that leaves us in a situation where we just pulled a bunch of animals, now I have no place to put them. So, having this option there, um, gives us, gives us that, uh, a comfort that we're able to care for these animals, you know, that we're pulling from a unfortunate situation as it is. I think that about sums it up.
Yeah, you did a pretty good job, um, you mentioned that in ninety-six, when it was built, there was no, um, outdoor kennels due to concerns about noise, but that has now been changed?
With, with the, uh, the addition of the dog parks down at, uh, Donhorn Park, I, I feel that the demeanor or the ideas may have changed to where, um, if we approached the, uh, the village, that, uh, they may see what we're after, or what we're looking for, for the betterment of our animals.
And I have had a discussion with them, uh, about the idea, and they seem to be receptive, but until we had a finalized plan, we didn't, uh, we don't have anything official to discuss.
So you talk about a finalized plan, like, um, what are we getting ready to move forward tonight? We get to move this to Capital Projects to continue working on it and finalizing?
I've been working with, uh, some of the local, local contractors and vendors, you know, trying to get some quotes, so I've got some rough ideas.
So these, this plan, the setup is how it would be?
That's, that's some, that's, that mirrors, uh, Berrien County's shelter, uh, they've got a pole barn that we've utilized in the past. It's nothing extravagant, it's, it's just bare minimums, you know, what, what I feel we need.
Incorporate like some of the stalls to be used as kennels too, where you could have a global, you know what I mean?
I've talked with our state veterinarian who does our annual inspections, um, companion animals fall under a little bit different regulation than, uh, livestock does. Um, but, uh, we've, we've got another condition or another issue at the shelters where the, the paint is flaking off the kennels. Um, and that's, that's something that's, they, they've talked to as well, and, uh, when I was talking with the state vet, uh, a week and a half ago, uh, she did suggest that that's something that, uh, the state could look at, you know, granting a, a temporary extension for that, so, that is a possibility.
So this wouldn't be able to be utilized for any other animals besides livestock?
At, at its current rate, as a pole barn type of facility, now to add ventilation, because we are required under regulations to, to provide air exchange rates at a minimum of ten times an hour. That could be, you know, that's, that's something that could be possibly incorporated in if we needed to, um, you know, particularly in, uh, where the, uh, small animal area is, is that'll be a, a separate room inside the pole barn.
And you said historically you relied on private citizens and businesses to house seized animals, but it's becoming less feasible, so now the county is sort of in a position where they're, they have to take action.
Right, um, in, in years past, I could go ten, fifteen years back, I could have two pages of, uh, residents in the community, you know, that would, uh, that would step up and even come help, um, assist with transporting livestock. Um, seven years ago, we received a gracious donation from, uh, a couple here in the community that donated a, a brand-new livestock trailer to us for transporting. Uh, but when we get into large numbers of animals, um, I've had to pri, uh, contract out to a private, private hauler, uh, to assist us, as well as other animal control agencies as well.
Did you have a motion? I'll make a motion to push this to Capital Projects.
Support.
Alright, so you have motion on the floor, any further discussions? We'll just make sure that you get invitation for our next scheduled meeting.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
The motion has been moved and supported, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have and the motion has been approved. Okay, I believe we're approaching our last item, which is fiscal year twenty-four budget amendments.
So, uh, in the packet, and the, the worksheet actually does give a cause, I can give a quick summary, so, uh, we'll just go item by item, so, uh, the items with the sheriff, essentially, um, we're being reimbursed through M calls for the Academy Assistance Program. This is actually recording anticipated increases in revenues, um, to offset the increased, uh, cost of obviously sending those recruits through the academy. So that's budget neutral in the sense that, um, the revenue from the reimbursement will offset that. USDA grant, essentially, we are just recording the receipt of that grant, um, as well as a transfer out to, um, I think, where does the transfer go to, is that to public improvement?
Basically, public improvement is paying upfront, and then when the reimbursement comes in from USDA, uh, because it's going into one-on-one, I need to reimburse back the capital improvement one, so that transfer is just moving in once it comes in back to capital improvement, to give them back that money.
Yep, and then the remaining three actually are all related to the same, um, sort of a premise, but, M one seventy-nine twenty-three, um, I believe, approved the District Court Collections Quirk. This, um, essentially allocates the funding from the fund balance to provide for that position. Um, the same for the, um, Child Support Secretary and Victim Rights Coordinator, M two oh one dash twenty-three, um, provided some additional, um, provided for that position, so this, uh, changes, adjusts the budget to account for that. And then the final item is R two oh seven, um, was actually related to the annual salaries of elected officials. Um, this just accounts for those changes that were adopted under that resolution.
Very good, uh, does anyone have any questions? If there are no further questions, I entertain a motion to move this item to the BLC meeting.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion's been made, any discussion? Motion has been made and supported, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has been approved. So, we're circling back to public comment, um, I'll open it up again if there's any public comment that needs to be made. Same rules apply, three minutes maximum, uh, please don't address any commissioners directly, and state your name and podium.
Let me get my timer ready for him.
Okay, no Charlie Bree, but I just wanted to comment on two things, one, uh, um, we did have a fairly consequential bank robbery case and the conclusion of a five-day jury trial, uh, jury deemed guilty as charged on Tuesday of bank robbery. This is the bank robbery that took place in February of, of last year at the Fifth Third Bank, guy with motorcycle, he came in and interesting, number of interesting facts on it, though, one, uh, it had got it to place in the South List, a nice job by the South List, uh, Police Department as well as the FBI, and they're into a conclusion. Uh, but this guy had in twenty thirteen done approximately eight attempted bank robberies in, in, uh, South, in the, really the Michiana area. He's convicted of about four, uh, bank robbery convictions, uh, at the federal level at that time. He received a lengthy sentence, uh, but was also in twenty twenty, seven years later got a compassionate COVID release. And I noted with interest, he said that, uh, don't worry, I won't bother the public in the future, and well, he did not keep his word. And, uh, and again, too, you know, this was a case where if it hadn't been for some really good work by the police, as well as, uh, some, you know, we've got a good citizenry here in Gas County, you know, they, uh, they work with the police, uh, provide the information. Uh, you know, we got help from the Sheriff's Department, as well as the State Police on this too. Uh, he was, uh, plucked up and arrested, and, uh, he will be sentenced on date tenth, and we'll see what happens there. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, uh, is I just, uh, and Sheriff, I got here late, but did you make any announcements here today?
I did.
Okay, alright, well then, uh, I've got nothing further to say at this point, uh, but, uh, some, some point in the future I will, so my apologies for maybe, uh, you know, getting ahead of the cart there a little bit, but again.
Don't get plucked up.
Again, I'll just go back to the bank robbery case again, too, it's just, uh, just, uh, I've tried a lot of cases in my forty years, and, uh, this one was certainly one of the more interesting and entertaining and serious ones, but, uh, you know, again, too, he just, uh, he denied that it was him, even though his sister said that a hundred percent, testified a hundred percent certain it was her brother. And at the end of the trial, the wife, who was not gonna testify, changed her mind and came in and threw And at the end of the trial, the wife, who was not going to testify, changed her mind and came in and threw a literally a veil of tears. She indicated that, yes, as she watched the video, that was certainly her husband making that bank robbery. Thank you.
Good press release, though, thanks for that, that was interesting to read.
Taking a little bit of good nature humor about the substan- substanarian.
I got that.
Calavazoo media folks did say that they appreciated all the detailed information.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Hello, Philip Egert, trustee of Milton Township. In regards to the public, Cass County Public Transit proposal, or millage that just passed, our county, or I'm sorry, our township is mostly agricultural. We don't have a village, a city, you know, we have, we don't have a big population, we don't have a doctor's office, we don't have grocery stores. I was hoping maybe we could opt out of that millage, if that's possible, because I don't know that they would come to our township, because most of our residents go into Indiana. I don't know if this transit place would go into Indiana, cross state lines, to take our residents to grocery stores, doctor's office, or whatever. But I don't know that I agree with our business model, our model, and I would like to possibly look at opting out so our farmers aren't paying for something that they're not going to ever use in Milton Township. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other further public comments? We'll go ahead and close the floor. Board member comments and announcements. Does anyone have anything they want to say? Please.
I just want to talk about, a couple months ago, we adopted a dog from the animal shelter.
Oh, yeah.
Dog is doing well, not so many issues, but doing well, and I encourage everyone to adopt a dog. Beautiful dog.
That's Sadie?
No. It's the, you didn't see.
Okay, but her other dog greets me at the door all the time.
Yeah, it's well worth it to adopt an animal, give them a good home, they're so appreciative, and they have so much love to give back.
Thank you, please.
Great to see Jim back, happy you're doing well and good to see you back.
Appreciate that, and I just want to, want to thank you all for your thoughts and prayers and, and for the fruit basket. We got a fruit basket from the county commissioners, and I appreciate that very much, it was very good, and.
You ate all of it?
I ate all of it.
You would have said.
I did share some of it with my wife. Thank you, it's good to be back, and just appreciate it very much.
I just want to remind everyone that Wednesday at the Cass County Road Commission, from 3:00 to 6:00, hazardous waste, used electronics, and it's my understanding we have three semis for tires, so give rid of all of your junk, and of course, we could use some help.
Not all of your junk.
Not all of it, no matter what.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. Thank you.
Can I use the last 30 seconds of my time, I did forget one important thing.
Yeah, 24 seconds.
I forgot to mention, next Thursday, we do have our flagpost ceremony for victims of crime and so forth, which is really moving. I appreciate those of you that have been here in the past. We are going to have a really special guest, who's going to sing a couple songs there. He's done the National Anthem at the, at the Orlando Magic NBA basketball games, 25,000 people. He does a lot of National Anthem singing at some Notre Dame sporting events, and again, I think he can be very impressed with his effort as part of that. So we would love to have him.
What time is it?
It's at high noon on Thursday of next week, I will send you an email with the flyer as well.
Well, we got it, Amanda sent us the flyer, the five.
Yes.
Yeah, she sent us to date.
She did, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? I have one thing that I wrote down, and I just want to discuss for a quick, this goes back to the item under new business. Just want to put this out there, so when we're getting ready to discuss our budgets, I appreciate that proactive approach on the repairs that are going on. I think Dave did mention something about maybe having a budget to be able to build a fund balance so that we are prepared for this kind of stuff, so I know that we're going to probably be discussing that here at the next workshop, probably. We'll probably have one here soon. So just maybe, just some food for thought for everyone to kind of think about that. I think, I think it'd probably be a good idea, if we already have something like that already built in our budget, right? I don't think we do.
Well, Public Improvement Fund is generally reserved for those sorts of uses.
Okay, very good.
And there is a policy by the board that you guys normally put a half a million dollars over into the public improvement to start doing some of those improvements. Last year, it was decided that we wouldn't move that, we had to save some money from public improvement, getting that million and a half dollar grant, as well as the jail improvements and such were coming from that other fund that was decided on as well. So I think that was the justification, but there is a policy out there that we are putting a half million dollars over there every year.
Perfect, good to know. All right, anyone else?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All right, motion has been moved and supported, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have.